I'd like to call the September meeting to order. Kathy, please do the roll call.
Mrs. Briscoe? Mrs. Tunney? Mrs. Oost? Mr. Andreessen? Mr. Bush?
Here.
Mrs. McMillan?
Here.
Mrs. Zelinski?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum, so can you please stand for the pledge? Okay, we will kick off the September meeting with our budget hearing with Dr. Shaw.
Thank you. Thank you, okay. So we've got our budget for our fiscal year 2023-24 budget. So our timeline for our budget is in August, the board approved the tentative budget. So we put it on display for 30 days, add it to the website, and then we set the hearing for tonight. Tonight is the opportunity for the public to give any written or oral testimony in regards to the budget. The board will vote on the formal budget tonight, and once the board has approved the budget, will submit it to the Will County ROE, the county clerk, and the State Board of Education. So the goal when we craft the budget is to maintain a fund balance between 35% and 65% of expenses to fund balance per our board policy 420. Little historical perspective is our financial profile with ISB. Mokina has scored in recognition for the last at least 10 years, which is the highest score that you can receive from Mokina. So it demonstrates that the Board of Education has been very fiscally responsible with the money from the taxpayers of Mokina. Our highlights for the budget are evidence-based funding. We've got a little bit of evidence-based funding increase. Typically, Mokina is not going to be a big recipient. Most schools that have larger increases in their evidence-based funding are schools who don't. S R 3 is still some of the COVID money from the federal government coming in this year. We do have an elevating educators grant of $108,000. We have seen Title I decrease over the last several years, which is also federal money. Our local revenue is less. So our CPI for 2022 is 5%, and for 2023, we will also be limited to 5%. And our Fund 21 goal is not to have any carryover fund balance. So you'll see a deficit in our Fund 21 because we had carryover from last year. We also have all our collective bargaining agreements in the budget, all our contractual obligations. This year, we do have a first and fifth grade Chromebook refresh, district-wide staff laptop Chromebook refresh, some additional curriculum and textbooks. We do have our capital plan expenditures based on our capital plan. And then we also purchased for the first time instead of leasing four school buses. So here's the summary of the budget with all of those revenue and expenses put in. So our education fund, we have our goal on the far right is to stay between 35% and 65%. In our education fund, which is our largest fund, we started with an unaudited beginning fund balance, and we'll have our audit given to the board tonight. So our unaudited beginning fund balance at 9.660 million, our revenue at 18,210,000, our expenses at 18,822,000, with an over-under of a negative 612,000, with an ending fund balance of just over 9 million. Our operations and maintenance fund, we do have a small deficit in our operations and maintenance. And in our O and M referendum money, we have a 1.1, almost $1.2 million deficit, which is money that we already have that we didn't spend out last year. Our bond and interest fund is pretty much, we bring in what we spend. Our transportation fund has a significant deficit due to the fact that we are purchasing four school buses this year rather than leasing, which means we won't have the lease expense next year, and we'll be able to build that fund balance back up. I am a social security. We also levy for what we need, the retirement fund. Our working cash is the district savings account. It was at one point prior to the referendum, the emergency fund in case anything, we had any kind of catastrophic in capital improvements. And then we have safety funds, which we don't really use. So the ending revenue for our budget is 24,756,000 with expenses at 247,000, with a deficit budget of just under 2.5 million, with the majority of that being the fund balance from Fund 21, which is money that we already know we need. Capital purchases this year. Percentage of balance, fund balance to annual expenditures without the, with all funds included at 52%, which is right in the middle of our goal of between 35% and 65%. Where does our money come from? We're very fortunate that our money comes from local. 86% of our revenue comes from our local taxpayers, for those of you in the, thank you. Where does our money go? Salary. So really, where our money goes is to salary and benefits and purchase services, also people. So our money, we are a people business. We service little people. As much as keeping teachers in front of kids and spending our money on kids. We do have a large number in capital outlay when compared to other schools in the district because of our referendum money and our capital projects. We're very fortunate to have that. And there's a fund balance in, over the course of the last 10 years. And this pasture, you can see where the orange is. One more. There you go. The orange is a little bigger in the end of the year because we had some fund balance left in Fund 21. Our revenue to expenditures and fund balance, as long as we keep the light blue, which is our fund balance, and that shows you how steady we have been with revenue and expenditures, where the light blue stays flat. There was that little up last year, and that was the fund balance that we had carried over. But the goal is to really maintain a balanced budget. And by keeping the blue line pretty straight across the bottom, we had a bump in 2016. We had an increase in revenue, and it was the project. And then keeping it flat kind of shows that there is a goal of having a balanced budget across the last 10 years. How are we doing? We do projections every March. And as we take a look at the projections, as we look five years forward with the fund balance in mind, to stay between 35% and 65%, we do know that, and the current path that we're on, only take a look at the next five years, that we, the red line is our fund balance. We're kind of on the upper end of the 35% to 65% of fund balance. So it looks like we're in a very good financial position.
Okay. So as far as the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget hearing, we now open up to the public. Were there any written testimony questions? No. Okay, is there any oral testimony? Okay.
My name is Angela Swenson. I'm the mother of three in the district, no, two in the district. One will be there in a couple of years. I would just like to simply comment that in the 23 to 24 budget, there are $0 being allocated to the gifted program expenditures. And our district's school policy 6130 states that the superintendent shall implement an education program for gifted and talented learners. So if this program is a school policy, then we need to allocate resources and offer it. So I propose to amend the budget to include appropriate resources for gifted program. Now, obviously, we don't have that program this year, but we could use those resources this year to hire a consultant to help make recommendations and help us design a program for advanced learners that could be implemented next school year. Thank you.
You? All right, I don't have any.
Hi, I'm Linda Kraus. I'm a parent of a child in the Mokina School District. And I would just like to comment on what Angela said. I also believe that we have a policy program for the gifted 6130 that is not being implemented and would like for the district to allocate funds for professional development and hiring a consultant in order to look into the needs of a, of gifted and talented children, as the policy states. Thank you.
Linda, turn over your hand.
I'm Erin. I'm Erin Min, and I'm a parent of two students in the district and a Mokina taxpayer as well. And I agree with both of them, but I have a question about transportation. I noticed on the very colorful graph that transportation in 2013, 2014, all that was a bigger percentage of the budget than it was, than it has been. And then it dips down, and then it actually goes up a little bit. So I was just kind of curious, has a dollar amount changed over time, or is it just percentage versus other, you know, other things? And I understand this, you know, with purchasing four buses, I understand spending next year may likely be less, but I was just, the trend, yeah, doesn't match up. Yeah, there, like the red one, big, big, smaller, smaller, small, 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 small. And then the next, and then the future five-year projection also shows a dip, and then you can see that a little bit as well. So I was just kind of curious if there's any clarification about my understanding of transportation.
I could probably take that one.
Okay. If you could take it, then.
So the transportation fund, probably six years ago, maybe seven, the district had a policy where they charged people for bus riding. And the finance committee convened and took a look at that practice, and we took a look at how school districts pay for transportation through state reimbursements, regular transportation, special ed transportation, how we have buses, whether they're leased, whether they're purchased, how we use that information in our transportation report that we file with the state every year. So we developed a plan through the finance committee that was a plan of not charging families for transportation that lived outside or inside of 1.5 miles. Anybody outside of 1.5 miles, you get free transportation. So we transitioned how that worked, and part of that plan was an overarching plan, taking a look at five years forward. So every year, the finance committee does a debrief on what does that look like? Did we make a good decision? Is the reimbursement flowing like we thought it would? We have the ability to adjust the tax levy to either flow money into transportation fund or out of transportation fund, and which fund it needs to go into, because school districts, like the graph that you were referring, are fund-based accounting. So we monitor that every year. We took a look five years out. We, two years out, you're probably pretty good, three, you're pretty good, four. So five years out on, on that transportation, we were within about $12,000 of the expectation of where we were. Transportation also had a very healthy fund balance. And so when we took a look at that fund balance, we knew that we could adjust with the levy as the state transportation, which is two years behind. So when you file for that reimbursement from the state, it takes two years before it actually flows into your revenue for transportation. So as we looked at the fund balance, we knew that when we transitioned that model, it would take a while for it to all even out, that it wasn't a one-year, two-year, or three-year fix. It was actually something that we were going to need to work on five or six years. So we got to the classroom, like, we're in a really good place. We still have high fund balance. We took a look at our buses that were coming off the lease, and you take a look at the buses coming off the lease with inflation, that the way it has been. When we're paying for a school bus that we paid for five years, and we looked at the price of those school buses, they were $10,000 a year at least, $12,000 a year at least, $14,000, $18,000, $23,000 to lease that bus. So the lease for the bus had doubled in five years. To purchase the bus that we paid, on an $80,000 bus, we paid $50,000 for the bus, and then they wanted another $60,000 to purchase the bus. It's like, well, that doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. So we actually took a look at our transportation fund, did another analysis of it, analysis of it last year, looked at what it's going to look like if we buy the buses and then we don't have a lease payment for the next five years. We'll still have some from the year before, but not on those specific four buses. And so we make that money up. It's going to take a few years. Fund balance is going to go down, but then it'll start to work its way back up. So that's why we ended up buying the buses, which are now $135,000 a bus that were $80,000 a bus five years ago. So then at year six, we won't have a lease for payments. We also won't be able to take depreciation on our, on our transportation claim. But we feel like purchasing those buses, when we are a 12-square-mile school district, we don't pay 15,000 miles on a bus every year, that we are going to be able to own those buses for longer than five years and be ahead of the game in year six significantly.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'll move that clarify for you.
You answered. It voids a lot of interest that we can put back into the classrooms. So, okay. Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you, Angela, Linda, Erin. I think in my six years on the board, I think that's the first time we've had oral testimony or comments in the budget hearing. So thank you for that. History was made. Okay. With that, then, we'll move on to board comments. Okay, hearing none, we will move on. I move that the Board of Education close the 2023-2024 budget hearing. Seconded by Ms. Zelinski. The discussion. Kathy, please call the vote.
Mrs. Briscoe? Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunney?
Yes.
Mrs. Zelinski?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. We will now move on to public communications. And duties in the order I handed them to me, so there's no preference or treatment on that. I think I'll be okay with names, but if I apologize in advance if I'm, you know, bad with names. Dr. Olinides knows I'm the last guy he's going to call for eighth-grade graduation to announce names, and I've come to terms with that. It's okay. So first one, oh, let me, sorry, we haven't had public comment in a while. So just some ground rules on this. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Limit your comments to school or district matters, which are in the notes here, we should not have an issue with. And then, okay, one more. Oh, last but not least, generally, the board will not comment on public comment. The reason for that is that the board acts as a whole, not as any individual member. So anything that might be questioned or proposed needs to be discussed as a board, as a whole, and then we need to move forward. Potentially also, there could be questions that the board needs to ask of different administrators to form an opinion. So for those reasons, we appreciate the feedback, but I just want everyone to know that we, general policy is that we do not respond to that. I just want everyone to know that the reason for that, it's not because we don't appreciate the comments, but we do have to act as a whole, and that could require discussion. Okay, enough with disclaimers. Linda Kraus, first one up.
Mokina. Hello again. My name's Linda Kraus, a parent of a student at Mokina 159. And I'm here in regards to the gifted program as well as enrichment. In 2020, prior to us purchasing our home in the district and our son entering kindergarten, we were told that the district could support our child's academic needs. The school hired a psychologist to meet with our son to rule out the need for an existing IEP and test his cognitive skills. He tested him a 99.9 percentile for both reading and math, and had a separate neuropsychologist report that said he would need to be in a gifted program by six years of age. The school district had this data prior to him beginning the year. At that time, he should have been formally evaluated for the accelerated placement without prejudice, as it was a board policy and an Illinois state law. I repeatedly asked for the district's policy on the APP and was still not given this information. Not receiving the APP process was just the first of many errors over a four-year span, contributing to my family's frustrations over our son's needs not being appropriately met. After speaking at the school board last spring and advocating on behalf of my son for years, the district began to implement the APP for families that were in the know, which by law should have taken place in 2018. He was full-grade accelerated last year and was, and this, and while this was a step of progress, he is still scoring in the highest percentile and may still need more. I would have preferred not to have accelerated my son and do not wish to accelerate him again and be placed in a class with children that would be three years his senior. He had been, he has been a test subject for the district in terms of differentiation, subject acceleration, whole-grade acceleration, as well as temporary subject level acceleration. If the district had a gifted or enrichment program available with one educated professional, such as a gifted endorsed coordinator, the oversight and errors we have had to endure the last four years could have been avoided. The specialists, these specialists understand the unique needs of gifted and talented learners and are typically advocates for this group of students as they are notoriously misunderstood or have biases against them. Up to 30% of gifted learners are twice exceptional, meaning they also have a disability, such as autism spectrum disorder, ADHD, anxiety, and dyslexia. Giftedness sometimes masks the disability and vice versa. Without a properly educated individual in place, these children will continue to be unseen and stifled in their growth, which could lead to unwanted behaviors and mental health issues. As I said, as I have said in the past, this is not the teacher's fault, not even the principals. The school board and the superintendent should be following the board policies as well as state and federal laws. Last year, we came to the school board and stated that policy 6130, program for the gifted, was not being implemented and still currently isn't. The policy states that the superintendent or designate shall implement an education program for gifted and talented learners.
Time.
I have somebody else's time as well attached to mine.
Okay, so next up is Mary Kraus. So I don't know, it's never happened before. So I guess.
I gave my time.
I know, so, so can you please stand, I guess, next to her? Linda, and she can, I guess.
You don't want to hear from me. So we're sorry.
Okay.
Thanks, Mary. The superintendent or designate shall implement an education program for gifted and talented learners that will challenge and motivate academically advanced learners and engage them in appropriately differentiated learning experiences to develop their unique abilities. It references Illinois Code 514A20, which I know by heart, which defines gifted and talented children as those scoring in the top 5% locally in their area of aptitude. Education should be the cornerstone of any school district. The professionals in this room who sought education administration as career should know that more than any of us. It is clear that there were no properly educated professionals in place to achieve success with the last enrichment program many years ago, as well as the dual-language program. These children deserve a chance to be challenged just as much as every other child. There's currently $0 spent on gifted programs, however, we have a policy for the gifted. I'm asking you, the board, to implement a program for the gifted immediately as referenced in the board's policy, and would like to see a comprehensive enrichment program developed to ensure the needs of all students are met. Please do not be disillusioned that a program needs time to be implemented. There are various sources and options we can provide to the current administration and board as opportunities to meet the needs of these children. We respectfully request a meeting with the board and administration to discuss the opportunities we can begin implementing immediately to identify and meet the needs of our students. Our goal is in line with the district's philosophy and core values to motivate and challenge all students and meet their needs. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Angela Swenson.
Would it be all right if Michael Kraus gives his time to me? I'll only go a little over three minutes.
Yep, I see, I see the notes here. So we'll do the same method. I think this is kind of unusual, but we'll, we'll go with it.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank the district for providing an environment in which my children feel encouraged, respected, and cared for by all teachers and staff. I really appreciate that. I am one of many parents and community members who would like to begin a conversation with the administration and board regarding enrichment offerings for high-achieving students. Our district's current enrichment program consists of math for grades six through eight. We are respectfully asking the administration to expand the enrichment program to include both math and ELA for grades three through eight, and to begin implementation by fall of 2024. The document that we shared with you tonight details the reasons for our request. I'll just simply highlight our four reasons right now. First, our district philosophy is to provide a curriculum that challenges each student. Secondly, our school district policy 6130 states that the superintendent shall implement a program for gifted and talented learners that will challenge and motivate. Third, the community has asked for enrichment, voting it in the top three improvements needed for our district in the 2021 survey. Fourth, surrounding districts all offer more comprehensive enrichment programs than our district does. We would like our students to have the same opportunities to be challenged as other students entering Lincoln Way Central. So tonight, we are asking the administration and the board to please read our request, consider and discuss whether our points are valid, offer feedback if any are not, and act as soon as possible in the interest of the group of students that are not currently being served. Our children are growing quickly, and if we keep enrichment as a far-off goal, the opportunity to serve them will soon pass. We believe our school can create opportunities that serve the needs of each student in alignment with our vision statement. And I am encouraged to hear that both Dr. Cohen and Dr. Johnson plan to attend a conference next month to research enrichment, and I hope that this will enable an action plan to be created for our own district. Dr. Cohen, I thank you for taking the time to send a written response to our email. Two reasons that you gave for not providing enrichment for, by the next school year yet are that the district must implement, support implementation of the new ELA curriculum this year, and that the district needs student performance data from this new curriculum in order to study the need for enrichment. So I just have a question for the sake of comparison. During this time of implementation of the new ELA curriculum, are we also going to not offer special education services or response to intervention, simply because we don't have student performance data yet? We don't need to avoid serving a cohort of students because of lack of data. We have their standardized test scores. If the, if Dr. Cohen and Dr. Johnson's hands are too tied with the new ELA curriculum to research and develop an enrichment program, then this is a time to hire a professional consultant to look at our school, understand our needs, and develop a plan for an enrichment program simultaneous to the new ELA curriculum being supported internally. If we wait for the proposed timeline, we are delaying serving our students by another two years or more. If resources are the issue, please let us remind you that this program, this is a program that our school policy says already exists. So we are in violation of our school policy by not providing a gifted and talented program. Is that three or six?
Oh, that's three.
Oh, three? Okay. I'm simply asking the school board, please have a conversation with Dr. Cohen. What can we do to stop putting off enrichment and start serving our kids as soon as possible? And I'll just end with my personal story. My third-grade daughter, she's very strong academically. She excelled in the dual-language program. Spanish was, at the time, her only challenge at school. When that program was eliminated, she was heartbroken. And she's doing fine, but she has really lost interest in school since her challenge was eliminated. I just saw that spark disappear. So they're doing fine. Is that really what we want to say as a district about our high-achieving students? What about how they could be doing if they were given a challenge that they need and deserve? Thank you for considering our request.
Angela? Thank you, Michael. Next up, Erin Min.
I want to thank you for recognizing that students of all learning abilities have needs that the district can support. Thank you for being willing to, to question decisions of past administrations and whether it still benefits our current population. Every neighboring district has an enrichment program with clear guidelines for the district to proactively identify and provide services to gifted and talented students. There are many tried and true, as well, as well as creative options to take place during the school day for enrichment programs, and I believe there's a way to do so starting in the near future. And I believe there's a way to do so starting in the near future. I appreciate the consideration to take sustainable steps, but also hope that something advertised as a temporary fix is preferable over more students aging out while waiting for enrichment to start. Thank you again for listening to parents advocating for students who do not have home support and valuing teachers who can easily identify potential enrichment students. I believe that this group of students can be better supported while also not being a burden on taxpayers or teachers.
Erin? Next up, Joy Coker.
Hi, everyone, I'm Joy Cokeras. I have four kids in district, one or two at every building. And I agree with the well-spoken speakers before me. We do need an enrichment or academically talented program here at Moquita 159. We already differentiate in ERA K through five with WIN and ISC. And then I learned that we have an honors program, it's math with math for junior high, and let's make that fill in the gaps. Think we can get that done. So thank you so much for your time. Thank you for your service, and thank you for caring about the kids.
Joy? All right, I, I thought I was good to go, but I spoke too soon, so. Niha Galati. Sorry if I butchered that.
That's okay.
Couldn't tell that to me or an eye.
Niha Galati.
Sorry, thank you.
Thank you so much for allowing us this opportunity to come in and present our, you know, stories and our views. I also have a third grader at MES, and the last couple of years, he has mentioned things like, you know, I'm bored, why do I need to go to school, et cetera. And some of that, of course, is just a kid trying to avoid going to school perhaps, but he, especially in math, felt like he wasn't being challenged. We did do the eval and testing twice, and the second time he did qualify to do either the enrichment or grade advancement option. Being that he is amongst one of the youngest in his class, I was reluctant to do the grade advancement, and we opted to do math at the fourth grade level for him. And, you know, I really appreciate the programs that you guys have put in place thus far. He certainly is continuing to do well academically, but it's not without challenges. You know, they're two different schools, timings, peers that he's with, different parts of the day, and, you know, it's, it's challenging. I think best-case scenario, of course, would be that he is amongst his classmates and, you know, able to excel in that sort of environment. Speaking with his teacher currently, the math teacher at the fourth grade level, to hopefully ease some of those transitions, whether it's, you know, placing him near friends or, you know, whatever other solutions we can kind of come up with together. But these feel like temporary fixes, and he's, you know, one of many. And again, I'm very thankful that we have this opportunity for him even, but I would like for it to be a more seamless process for him and many others like him, where they can continue to be with their peers and, you know, excel at that rate. So thank you so much for your time. I hope, you know, the efforts that you're putting in and the research for enrichment and advancement programs moves forward and moves forward quickly, so he has the opportunity to take advantage of that. Thank you so much.
You? That's all the public comment that I ever see. Okay, all right. See, I went scrambling to pull out a sheet, so that's good. We didn't leave anyone behind. Okay, good. Okay, we will move then on to MTA.
Good evening, everybody. All of you know how I love to sing the praises of our remarkable staff. I'm going to change it up a little bit. So this school year, I'm going to bring a grade-level rep from most of the grades to come speak what they're doing in their classroom, straight from them. So tonight, we have some eighth grade, some of our eighth-grade team, and Craig Martinez is going to speak tonight.
Maybe that's my cue. Three minutes, really? I can't do it in the audience in three minutes. All right, I'm Craig Martinez. I have 104 kids in the district, all eighth grade. They're pretty good. We've just gotten to know them, it's about four weeks in. And once again, it's, it's just an honor and a privilege to be working with the eighth-grade team. We have several of our members here. Mrs. Stonis is here, Ms. Pupaul's here. Our team looks a little thin right now, but there is literally not a single person in the eighth grade who doesn't coach or sponsor something. Every single one of us have things beyond that classroom hours on our team. We just happen to be out of season except Mrs. Stonis, who's got bowling club on a different night. So it's tough to get anybody after, after hours. But talking about the time we have the kids, I'm going to steal a little bit from Mike, let him do the history report on writing. But he's got a lot to say about our writing program and our writing initiative. But being at the top end in eighth grade, we get to see the results of what happened last year. We've already done our first benchmark assessment, and we can see the growth already from what they did last year in seventh grade and what was taught in sixth grade. And what, where they're at right now is probably a semester ahead of where we started last year. We're already able to talk about things that we weren't able to even get to later on. So it's, it's just been fantastic that that's our starting point this year. Our kids are very coachable, and so this group, we're really looking forward to the progress that we're going to be able to make with them. For instance, one of the things that we did when we started off with this first one is we introduced our MLA citations in language arts and getting them to cite the author and the page number in it. Parentheses in the right places, period in the right place, which is a pain in the neck, and anybody who's ever had to do that stuff for, for college knows what a hassle it is to, to do citations. We probably did about two, maybe three lessons on it before we got to the benchmark point, and probably half of our kids did it and fairly correctly, just based on those couple of lessons, and that wasn't even one of the requirements to the assignment. So it was really neat to see how that stuff is carrying over and how productive they're being with it. So I'm really looking forward to the growth that we can, we're going to see over the course of the year. Watching them, the work and the effort and the questions they're asking is just fantastic. So not only are they working hard academically, but it's also interesting to see with this eighth grade, the hearts that are behind them. We just had our first kindergarteners experience with these guys. Now, we're one, one year away from closing the circle. Next year's eighth graders will be the first ones that were kindergartners when we started this program. So next year, we'll bring that all the way back around. But this year's group, they took two. They weren't hesitant about it. They went in there, we got them, sat down with their buddies and working with it. One of the things that we really were reaching out this year was bringing in special needs kindergartners particularly. So we had to turn, because we blindly matched them up before we bring them over. We've got a roster, we go, okay, well, these are going to be your buddies. But we knew we had five kids coming out that had special needs. And so we asked our eighth graders, we need somebody to work with them. Who's, you know, if you're willing to be extra patient, work through whatever's going on with it. We need five people. We made this announcement at lunch, and we had 35 kids sign up. We had to turn kids away, and they were disappointed that they didn't get to have one of these buddies. So that's the kind of kids we have here in eighth grade. So I anticipate that it's going to be a really good year, really good year. The one last thing I'll toss out here is that we're putting together our chapter list and that for Washington DC. We have 166 currently eighth graders. 100 of them are going to Washington DC this year. They want stuff, they want experiences, looking forward to this, are participating. If you saw our hallways today flooded in, today was Ken and Barbie Day, birth spirit day, and there was a whole lot of pink and Ken stuff, including Dr. Rollinitis and I. So we were on board. I don't think we got pictures of that, fortunately. But it's good stuff. These are great kids. We're really looking forward to what's going to happen this year. And if you ever want to stop by, they're great kids to visit with. So thank you very much.
MCSA? No. Okay, MEF? PTA?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Just a quick update from the PTA. Currently, we're at 143 members. We had our first member meeting last week, September 12. We voted on the bylaws. They've been submitted to the state for approval. We announced the secretary, we have an open position for a secretary. We'll be taking four nominations at our next meeting in October. Committees have started. The Excellence Committee met today. We're working on the School of Excellence, moving from the second step to the third step. Looked over some grants. The National PTA offers $650,000 in grants to local PTAs, so we selected some of the ones that we thought were a good fit for our schools. And hopefully, you know, we will get them. Our Treasury Report was reviewed and approved. Some of our upcoming events, we have a paint night on Friday night at the 19th hole. Fall swing November 4th at the 19th hole. Tickets on sale now via our website. And we'll have, we'll be having the pumpkin decorating contest October 19th for MES. Halloween dance at MJHS on 10/27. And that's all I have. Thank you so much.
You? Okay, next up, we'll go with the Board of Education.
I have a couple, Eric.
Okay.
A couple things. First, I'd like consideration given to adding both the booster groups, athletics and music, to the agenda. You know, I didn't personally extend any invitations, but I would hope that the board would support in addition, similar to what MEF and PTA do. So that is one of the things that I wanted to bring up. And the second is, I would like support for the implementation of a board policy committee pursuant to Section 2150 of our policies. This is a standing committee that researches policy issues and provides recommendations to the board. And the goal, as I see it, would be to review the current set of policies that we have and identify areas that may be deficient or otherwise could use some improvement. So those are two issues that I would like consideration from the board. Thank you.
Okay. Comment, anyone else? Okay?
So I speak for myself here in this situation, and I just want to acknowledge everybody in the room and thank you all for coming and presenting and advocating for your children. And I can appreciate that, and I want to recognize that, and thank you. I hear you. I've read your, your, your letter and your emails that you've sent, and thank you for that. I look forward to having these conversations with my fellow board members, and I would also like to suggest we implement, we consider implementing two committees. One would be a standing committee for the Board of Education to have for exploring enrichment opportunities indefinitely, always, just consistently. And I think the public and the board would benefit, and maybe more myself, and I think everybody else would benefit from more information on what we're doing today in the different aspects at each school and with the accelerated placement program. So that's the first thing. And then the second thing is, I would like to have my fellow board members consider a special board committee on safety. I think we can all benefit from going in-depth on our safety manual and policies and program. So I think that would be more of a temporary thing that we could accomplish and then move forward with, but obviously, that's for conversation. So that's it. Thank you.
Okay. So my comment to the two of you would be that, fortunately, I think four of the sportmen, Jim, Lisa, myself, and Anna were on the board. The last time we officially adopted a special committee, it was the Finance Committee, six years ago, to explore, you know, referendum issues. And then it, after the referendum passed, it continued on, and we've met periodically over the years and made other recommendations and changes to that. As Dr. Shaw alluded to, we changed our whole transportation funding from locally-based to Illinois-based to help out the taxpayers. But in that, to get that committee going, we, it took two months, and we provided details on how the committee would work, would be on it, how you comply with OMA, other things like that. So I would recommend that for these three committees, if you guys could put together kind of how they would work, I think that would help the discussion with the board to move those forward.
In place for how the Finance Committee works right now? That we could reference?
Uh, I don't know of anything that we have to. As far as how it got started or how it got?
Well, I mean, I'm just trying to see if there's an example of what you're suggesting we do in place for the committee that's?
Uh, I don't know of anything. Let me see, I can probably put something together, I think, on how it's structured and how we comply with certain rules on that. I can come up with something for you guys. Okay, any other board comments? Okay, our auditor has been waiting very patiently.
All right, well, thank you for having me. My name is Don Shive, principal at Waterbuck and Naaman. Been working with the district for a number of years. So I first would like to thank Dr. Shaw and Janet and the entire team for all their help in making this a successful audit year. Without your help, this wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Next, I'm going to go through the annual financial report with you, which is the thicker the packets you received. And if you turn to page one, you'll find our Waterbuck and Naaman waterhead. This is our independent audit report in which we provide a modified opinion. This modification is due to the fact that the school district reports on modified cash basis. It's not out of the ordinary for school districts to report on cash basis, but we do have to have that modification. With the exception of this modification, it was an otherwise clean audit year in which we found no issues with internal controls or the numbers as they were presented. If you turn about three more pages, you'll run into the management discussion and analysis. This really provides a summary of how the year performed in narrative form. So if you want, if you have questions on fluctuations from year to year or what the numbers truly mean, this is where you'd want to go to find those answers. Your individual fund financial statements begin on page 17. And it starts off with your balance sheet. On the far-right column towards the bottom of page 17, you'll notice that the total ending fund balance for the district as a whole was at $16.6 million. 87% or $14.5 million is related to your general fund, which is your main operating fund. It's made up of your education, operations, and maintenance toward and working cash funds. See how these funds perform in the current year. We can skip ahead to where will be your income segment, which is on page 19. Towards the bottom of page 19, you'll notice that the general fund did have a net loss of $919,000. Although there was a loss in the current year, this fund actually performed better than anticipated, with your revenues coming slightly higher than anticipated and your expenditures being below budget. So it actually did perform better than anticipated. The notes of financial statement begin on page 21. And the notes really provide further detail into how we came up with the figures that we did. we did with supporting schedules. Within there, you're going to find your long-term debt and your capital asset schedules. I'm not going to go through the notes with you tonight, so I'll have you skip ahead all the way to page 59. Page 59 is the start of your budgetary information. So if you want to see how a specific fund performed based on what was budgeted, this is where you'd go to see those comparisons. Does anyone have any questions?
Questions for the auditors? I think most Board members are at the Finance Committee when you present it, so...
Yes.
I don't think there's any new questions, so...
All right. Well, thank you, and enjoy the rest of your evening. Take care.
Okay. Next up on the agenda is the school improvement plans with the principals. Not sure if you guys drew straws on who goes first, or if Dr. Cohen has a plan here, but I'll just defer it to you guys.
I want to thank not only our principals, but also the building leadership teams at all three of our campuses. They came in in early August and came together as a district. We did some learning together based on a book by Tony Frontier called The Five Levers to Improve Student Learning. And we dug into those levers and how they were applicable to our work. Then we went and did deep dive into our IAR data, and each building has come up with a plan. As you'll see, there's a strong ELA theme to the work in all three buildings this year. But I'll let the principals go ahead and take it away, in terms of the things that they are working on, starting with MES.
We were really excited to create our school improvement plan this year. We were very motivated and inspired by the junior high and what they had accomplished. And so we've hopped on the writing bandwagon, which is exciting. But we're also implementing a new reading resource this year that is a pretty heavy lift. It's rigorous. It is deep. It is, there's a lot to it. And so in order for us to make sure that we are developing our own collective efficacy or understanding our shared vision as a school, but also as a grade level, the committee decided to write a goal around that, to make sure that everybody has the same understanding and approaches instruction the same way, using the same resource consistently across grade levels, so that we can make sure that there is equity in what all of the students at each grade level have access to and learn throughout the school year. So I commend the BLT for that focus, because that is a, that is a real commitment, a very professional commitment, and I give them so much credit for making that an important part of what we do and our focus. So the priority area for the goal is teacher collective efficacy. And what that looks like is implementing our resource with fidelity. So we are all doing the same thing as it's designed, including all of the components. So we are working through that. Again, like I said, it's a, it's a pretty meaty program, so our teachers are really getting a handle on navigating a lot of materials. It's a hands-on program, so it's, there's a lot of materials that come with it, including performance tasks at the end of a module or a unit. And so just navigating all of the materials with that is important and making sure everybody's on the same page. So during dedicated weekly team meetings and monthly school improvement time during our early dismissal days, MES grade-level teams will work collaboratively with the guidance and supportive administrators and the instructional coaches to learn, understand, and implement the EL, ELA curriculum resource with fidelity as measured by actions identified in team notes and positive movement on a Likert scale. So that Likert scale is four simple questions. Are you able to implement it easily? Are you able to navigate the materials? Are you able to analyze your data and adjust your instruction accordingly? So every month, you know, I'm going to expect that this month, we're going to see a lot of ones and twos. And then as time goes on, we'll see a positive forward trend towards fours and fives, meaning, yes, I'm feeling really comfortable with this. So I think that's just common to see when you're implementing something new. One team meeting a week will be dedicated to discussion, reflection, and forward planning. And early dismissal days will be dedicated to that discussion, reflection, and planning also. And documented team feedback once a month, and it will also be reviewed by the building leadership team. And the purpose for that, well, the Likert scale survey is anonymous, but it does ask the teachers to identify what grade level they're with, so that we can see if there's systemic trends, struggles, so we can support and adjust and pivot school-wide, or if there are specific struggles or challenges within a grade level. So we want to make sure that we are responding to the needs of our teachers and supporting them. So that is our first goal. Our second goal is hopping on that writing bandwagon. Our new reading resource, I should say ELA resource encompasses writing. There's a strong writing component, really developing writing skills in our students, which is an area that we feel like there's lots of opportunities for improvement in our school, based on our IAR scores for third grade from last year. So the goal itself is that MES students, and this is a three-year goal also, we have, we want to give ourselves time to get to know the resource and then adjust and plan over the next three years. But they will increase their writing proficiency as evidenced through end-of-unit writing assessment rubrics and report card data. We will identify when formal writing assessments will occur at each grade level. We will review the rubrics ahead of the unit, so we know what we'll be teaching and what is expected of our students by the end of the unit. Make sure we can backwards plan from there. Our grade-level teams will compile, organize, and interpret student data from the end-of-unit writing assessments to identify areas of strengths and needs. And these areas are in knowledge and understanding, organization and purpose, and evidence and elaboration. Rubrics will be used to guide student feedback for the purpose of reteaching small group instruction. So a teacher would use the rubric, show it to the student, and say, here's all the, all the areas where you're demonstrating real strengths, and then here's where we're now going to shift our focus, and we're going to develop this skill. Data will be compiled and shared at school-wide and discussed at staff meetings, so that we are sharing amongst ourselves, not just within our grade levels. And we will use that student data and feedback from the teams as a building leadership team to reflect and evaluate our formal writing assessment process, so that we can make adjustments when we implement writing for next year. Thank you.
So, we're continuing with what we started last year. We brought in consultants to go through writing with us. It was a year-long process. Our writing scores improved. We did a great job. However, this year, we're going to be even more focused. Our first goal is writing proficiency in math. We look at ourselves as a bridge between... So our first math goal leads directly into what the junior high is doing. We are adopting the CER structure for writing, the claim, evidence, and reasoning. Our math teams have already taken their first Common Writing, and we're collecting the data now. So it is, our math teachers are very excited. You know, it just gives them another way of looking at our students and collecting that data. We did have the two junior high math teachers come over on our last early release day, and they talked to our math teams. They discussed some of the challenges, some of their successes. So we're really trying to build off of that knowledge, and I think the great teachers are going to be even more happy in a couple of years. Danielle and Jeff, who came over, you know, they complimented. They said they could already see this year how much, how much easier it is to get into writing with their current sixth graders. So we are excited to continue that process. You know, some of our action steps, you know, it's, you know, the same process. We need to teach the kids how to use the structure, identify the writing opportunities within the curriculum. You know, we want the writing opportunities to be up there. We want it to be part of what they're already doing, so we don't want to create anything brand-new. We're going to co-create and share some exemplars with the students. They know what a good writing piece looks like. We actually have a few samples from the junior high that we're going to be sharing with our fifth graders, and something that they can shoot for. Feedback is another thing that we're working on, not just with our writing, but just school-wide. Our teachers have always given the students great feedback. We're really working with the students to teach them how to get feedback to their peers, authentic feedback, you know, that it's beneficial for everybody. Our staff is going to collaboratively evaluate the student writing, so we'll make sure we, you know, we're being that efficacy. We want to make sure we're doing it across the board. And then finally, we're going to collect and analyze the data quarterly. Looking at the data, we'll talk about it with our team meetings. We'll talk about it building-wide, and then we'll also discuss it with our BLT, once all that data is collected. Our second goal goes along with writing at ELA, kind of branching off of what the elementary school is doing. EL education, it is challenging. It is a, teachers are, they're getting through it, and they're doing an awesome job with it, but it's a lot of work. It's a lot of effort, but they are doing a fabulous job. I want to give a shout-out, before I go any further, to our two instructional coaches, Lisa Finney and Sharon Youngbug. They're very much involved with this whole, both of our writing goals, and they just do such an awesome job. Love them to death. So for writing in ELA, again, we want to use what's already embedded in the curriculum. We don't want to have to create anything new. We want it to be authentic part of what the students are already doing. So our teachers are going to identify Common Writing pieces that we can collect data. One of the, not challenges, but one of the parts of EL education is that they don't have consistent genres, informative, narrative, or opinion. They don't have consistent writing opportunities across the entire school year. They might have them for the first two quarters, but then something different for the second two. So that being the case, this year is going to be more of a baseline for us. We're going to have all these writing opportunities. We're going to collect all the data. Of course, the data is going to be used to guide instruction for this year, but we're really going to be focused on it for next year. How can we fine-tune what we're asking the kids to do? How can we fine-tune what we're teaching them? So it really is going to be more of a baseline school year to be implemented at an even deeper level next year. Some of the same things that I talked about for math, we're doing for ELA, you know, the feedback from both teachers and peers, collaboratively evaluate the work, and then formally collect and analyze the grade-level data, which we discuss at content teams, grade levels, building-wide, and then the, our EL teams. We are continuing, last year, we had, one of our goals was more of a culture goal, where we did some cross-grade level activities. We did inter, homeroom activities. We are continuing those things. It's not an official goal, but we are continuing with that. We saw a lot of benefits from kids interacting with each other, so those are some of the things. Just because it's not a goal, we're still doing that, and I think the kids really look forward to it.
All right. They all told me I can't talk as much, and they just talked for like 15 minutes. So, junior high, we are sticking, we're in year three of our goal, of our writing goal, the CER goal. You've heard me talk about it quite a bit here, and Craig alluded to it a minute ago, that I know the scores don't become official until next month, but you've seen some of the preliminary scores, and this writing goal has had a tremendous effect across the junior high. So, the first year was learning about it. The second year was, last year was our second year, it was practicing it, experimenting, implementing in the classroom, trying new things, and adjusting. This year is using everything that we've learned for the last two years. And again, as Craig said, and all my, all my teachers would say the same thing, it's picking up exactly where we left off, actually ahead of where we left off in most cases, and really trying to test those kids on those rubrics to say, where are they, and what do we need to do to move them even further forward? I think we, in the discussions I've had already, we're most likely going to have to adjust our rubrics, because our kids, in some cases, are already meeting our goals. So it's a good problem to have. We're in that fine-tuning. We've had some great discussions in our departments already about what does this exactly mean, trying to get our language the same across our, our rubrics and our expectations. So year three is going to be fun. It's not the end of writing. We're just going to implement this. This becomes a part of what we do, and then we're going to try and tackle something else. We have other things that we need to try and work on. But I think you'll see when we do our, our reports for IAR in a month, the tremendous, dramatic effects that this has had. And I think seeing what we're doing, the continuity between MES, MIS, and us is just going to make that even better. So goal two is more of a culture goal, like we were talking about. We looked at all of our data. Right now, we have our biggest piece of data, not all we have. Our biggest piece of data is the participation and things on the five essential surveys. And we found some areas that were, we were lacking, or we felt we were lacking, that we want to work on, in staff engagement and things beyond the classroom. Craig mentioned that their, their team has a tremendous amount of people who do things beyond the classroom, but we want our kids also to do more things beyond the classroom, going to things, attending activities, participating. The PTAs helped us out. We had a great first start of the year with the back-to-school bash. If you didn't see the pictures, the foam party, that was hilarious and a lot of fun. A little bit cold, but they didn't seem to mind. They were soaking wet, but they had a great time. So we want to engage kids. We don't come into games. We want them to participate like we did this week in school spirit activities. So we are reimagining our tier-one behavior team with an emphasis on building that media community, both with the staff and with the students. So that's our goal two, and we want to try and track what kids are participating. Are we seeing an increased participation? Are we seeing more kids participating in the activities that we have, and staff as well? All right, then goal three. This one, one of our, one of our discussions we had is to have a goal that's kind of ending and a goal that's beginning. So this is going to, is year one of three for our metacognition goals. That's, that's thinking about thinking, thinking about how you think. And this came from our, our summer meeting, where we had, we looked at some of the metacognition stuff in, in the five levers, and we decided that's something that we might want to explore. So this year, it's that learning year and that experimental year. So, you know, we're going to be working on that right now. I'm on the wrong page. So we've, we've looked at this due to our, I'm still on the wrong page. There we go. We looked this, because of the five levers, sorry, and the John Hattie's Visible Learning, that's what I was blanking out on, and trying to find something that teaches our kids to bring it up to another level. Our scores are getting better. They're still not great. They're not where we want them to be. So what are some of those little things that we could do in the classroom that are going to help us build that edge? So in year one, it's going to be learning. We're going to be doing a book study. We're going to be doing professional development on what is metacognition. And then year two will be just like what we did with writing. We'll be developing lessons for the students to participate in. And then obviously, year three will be that, honing that and adjusting our instruction accordingly. About that.
Okay. Any questions for the principals?
I have just a couple quick ones. You know, you smile at me, because you know I'm going to have questions, Ms. Chorley. I'll be really quick, but could you remind me of how you establish baselines, especially when, you know, writing is somewhat subjective, right? So how, how you go about that, and, and, you know, if that's part of how you're utilizing the strengths of MJH and what they've built so far, and utilizing the same rubrics and that, if you could help me in understanding that. Thanks.
Sure. Um, we, MES and MIS are using the same resource. We have very similar rubrics that flow and support each other. The junior high uses their own curriculum that they wrote years ago, and Dr. O'Nais, tell me if I'm wrong, and they have created their own rubric. So I can't really speak to the junior high and what they use to create their baseline data and how they measure growth. We will use our rubrics ongoing, and our baseline will be how students are doing. So it's not, we're going, the root, the standards are clustered into those three areas, like knowledge and understanding. I don't have them... I don't have them committed. Knowledge and understanding, that's okay. So we'll use the rubrics to measure growth, so they'll, where they're at, and then are, do they continue to grow over time? And then we will also use the rubrics, no, we will also use report card data. So we'll do a standards analysis where I can take all of the students, and for each of the writing standards, we will see how many students were at a level three, how many students were at a level two, and how many students were at a level one, like percentage wise. So that would be like our summative data that we will do three times a year, and then our formative assessment information will be using those rubrics to guide instruction. So we have two different systems for data collection going on there, but what we want to see is over time, that they are, that they're, we see that forward movement on the writing rubrics.
You mentioned the subjectivity. Writing is subjective, however, using the rubrics and doing the collaborative evaluation, the teachers really are all on the same page, so they can look at the same piece of writing, and they can all come up with the same evaluation because they've worked at it so much.
Yeah. That's really helpful.
And they're all using the same rubrics. So you have that consistency across the grade levels.
That's really helpful. And my last question's just for understanding. Moving from the RACE, the R-A-C-E, to the C-E-R, is that because of, is that what Lincoln Way schools do? Just out of curiosity.
We, we still do RACE as part of our, we do lots of different writing opportunities for, in our ELA curriculum, they can use RACE as a smaller piece, just as everyday writing. So we're still using that. The C-E-R, we are using just for math.
For math.
And then that goes to.
We, when we, literally, the meeting where we chose to use C-E-R was a meeting that we just found out that the high school was, not in all their subjects, but they were going to be using that as their basic framework. And it dovetails with races, or, or with race, or with any of the, like, DBQs, things like that. It just, it's a different vocabulary. So once we get them, like, we keep saying, do the, teach them to write, and then we can talk about definitions later. You know, claim or assertion are essentially the same thing. So just teaching them what that means and what a good one is, then it's, it's just a vocabulary issue.
Okay. No other questions? We'll move then on to information reports. Finance committee update from Ms. Zelinski.
Well, I don't have to report much, because Dr. Shaw presented the budget this evening, and thank you for doing that. And I'd like to thank Ms. Saroni for her detailed presentation last week, much appreciated. And everybody was there, so that was nice. And then our auditor was Ms. Knight, so we are booked for that. And November thirteenth will be our next meeting. Anything else, Dr. Shaw? Ms. Zelinski?
I would just like to thank Dr. Saroni for that special services report, and I would encourage anyone to look for that report on our website. I'm sorry, I don't have a specific place for where it is, and I know.
It will be on the transparency page.
Great. It, it's really full of some good information, and I appreciated that report.
Okay, next up is superintendent, Dr. Cohen.
All right, believe it or not, today's day twenty-five. We are one-seventh of the way through the twenty-fourth school year. Catherine's laughing in the back. I want to thank our teachers, related service providers, for just, just a great start of the year with, with our students and parapros, but especially our kindergarten and first grade teachers who had to do a little extra work this year, as our classrooms were repainted, and pre-K went through the whole remodel process. So there's a lot of moving in and moving out that had to take place, so thank you very much for their effort. I want to publicly thank our transportation department. It is a very rare day when, on the first day of school, you don't have a late bus. Every bus was in, our last bus in was six minutes prior to the beginning of school on the very first day of school. We are fully staffed in transportation, and they came in just hitting the ground running on day one. I, just very impressive. You never know what kind of delays you're going to run to, especially with the little ones on the first day of school, apprehensional getting on the bus, a lot of photos, et cetera. So to have them all be on time the first day was kind of shocking, actually. Also, shout out Dave's here, our maintenance staff, with all the work that they had to do this summer. There was a lot of, there were a lot of projects just in this building alone, and we do a lot of projects in one space. It's sometimes hard to get a building this size ready for primetime. I also want to thank Dave for all the extra work he's had to put on, put in with, I'm not sure if you had a chance to look out back when you got here today. Playground construction started yesterday, and when we have our next meeting next month, we will be a few short days away from our dedication. So are we still on track for concrete tomorrow? Tomorrow and Friday, so they're going to be pouring the concrete curbs around the playground itself. My, again, gratitude and calls for patience for our first and third grade teachers, we're going to be hearing the sound of trucks and bobcats and all that kind of good stuff for the next few weeks. Yeah, keep the shades down, because the kids really love the trucks. They, they do. And then finally, I want to point out, Dr. Johnson, I will be attending the Illinois Association for Gifted Children's Conference next month. In fact, I believe the first day of it is the day of our board meeting. Here are some things we're looking at, the things we're going to be researching. First, we're going to be looking at best practices. Not every gifted program or enriched program is created the same. Some are truly just a deeper dive into grade level standards, some involve acceleration, especially in mathematics. So reviewing, looking at current literature as well, you know, studies from nineteen ninety are probably not going to inform our practice as well as studies from twenty eighteen. Looking at successful districts, I would define successful districts as districts demographically similar to us, but those districts that have high levels of achievement. So, you know, if we have the same number, you know, it's hard to compare apples to apples when you have districts that are big versus small in the resources they have, or schools that are big versus small in the number of sections they have. Every school is, is unique, and so how you, what kind of a program you roll out depends to an extent on your structure and your resources. Us having seven grade sections per grade level gives us certain advantages compared to a school where maybe there's only two sections at a grade level, and everything has to be a pull-out service. But districts like us, what are the best ones doing? Entrance criteria and exit criteria. You know, how are we going to identify those students? For example, for our rich program, math program at the junior high, it's a combination of their IER score, their Fastbridge score, local, and scores on local assessments. Prior to third grade, we don't have an IER score. You know, what are, you know, there are a variety of different assessments out there. What does that look like? Articulating with the high school, what that looks like, staffing, whether or not we have self-contained classrooms, or whether we have multiple classrooms per grade level, pull-in, push-out, et cetera. So there are a lot of things to consider. Getting this right is very important, and which is why we want to make sure we study that. So more to come in that. Dr. Johnson, I will put something together for, just to kind of start the discussion, give you an idea of a roadmap at the October board meeting. That concludes my report.
Dr. Cohen. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to Dr. Johnson.
Good evening. This month's report, as I always do, I provided an overview of the September professional development that has taken place or will take place this month. That includes the September early release activities that happened last week. I also provided an overview of the lesson study professional development that we conducted in kindergarten through third grade with our new ELA curriculum. That was the first time our district has engaged in that type of professional development. And I personally want to thank Mrs. Arduino, Ms. Matt, and Mrs. Esgar for opening up their classrooms to all of their grade level colleagues, administrators, coaches, and they kind of put themselves in the spotlight and taught the lesson that we collaboratively planned. So that was a huge stop, and we're really appreciative for them for doing that as part of the process. I also included a little bit of information regarding the beginning for the school year of the Lincoln Way Area Curriculum Council and the focus for September, and I also provided some information about the bilingual directors program, bilingual program directors meeting that I will be attending as our district's bilingual director on behalf of the district here at the end of September. In addition, I provided some information for you regarding our upcoming Teacher Institute Day, which is taking place on Friday, October sixth. I had mentioned in my report, but want to personally invite anyone who is able or interested in attending. I did provide for you this evening at your place a catalog that outlines the sessions that we will be offering to our certified staff during that time. If you are interested in attending, please take a look. If there's any sessions you would like to go to, let me know so I can make sure to put you as a participant, so we have enough materials, you know, if you will be attending. But thank you to our teachers for providing the feedback. I had asked in August things that they were looking for to grow themselves professionally as it relates to their professional growth goals as part of our evaluation process. And you'll also see many of the sessions also align to either our school improvement plan goals or district strategic goals that we have prioritized for this year. I did provide a program implementation update in terms of the first couple of weeks of school with our new ELA resource, Open Up Resources EL Education. I want to say thank you to our teachers for all the time and effort that they are putting into getting the program up and running in their classrooms. Like Mrs. Chorley said, it's definitely a heavy, heavy lift, there's a lot of planning involved, and I just, so thankful and appreciative for all the work that the teachers have done to make this first month as successful as it's been. It's been so fun and absolute joy to go into classrooms and see the students engaging in conversations together, talking about the books they're reading, and, and the writing that I've been seeing in the classrooms is just outstanding. So I look forward to seeing the work that will happen the rest of the year with that. In addition, I have an informational item for you regarding a couple other books, so those will be information this evening. It will be on display at district office for thirty days, and I'll look for your approval as an action item next month. And finally, I did want to say thank you to Ms. Schindler, Ms. Altekrede, and Mrs. Storino for leading a presentation on our very first Mokina ELL family information night that happened earlier in this month. They just did an amazing job planning and preparing and having a really inviting event for all of our district's EL families to learn more about the program and to get to know the teachers on a more personal level. That's all I got.
Next for Dr. Johnson. Okay. Next up.
I'm sorry. I have a question. Um, I don't want to put you on the spot. So if you, forgive me if I didn't bring this up. So with the, with the bilingual program that you, I'm scrolling back through, sorry. That is for English language learner, that enrollment of English language learners, is that fair to say?
Correct. Yeah, so, yeah, so the state, we are required to offer through the state of Illinois a bilingual program, and based on the population of your students, it's determined under that umbrella what type of programming you have in the district. So we don't offer a bilingual education program. In order to do that, we have to have twenty students who are EL learners that have the same language in the same school. We have not reached that twenty, if you remember back to our board report with the dual language program last year, we have not reached having twenty students of the same language in each, in any of our schools. So because of that, we offer a transitional program of instruction, which is known as a TPI program, and that's the model of instruction that we provide, which is English instruction with, with the support from a certified EL specialist.
So do you happen to know, this is where I don't want to put you on the spot, roughly, like, the number of children that are enrolled in that, in that program throughout the district?
Yes, we are about one hundred. I was planning on including it in my October board report, as I've done the past couple of years since I've been here. No, no, it's fine. You haven't been, you know, on the boards that, so I will provide in October a more specific breakdown of how many students we have in each grade level. I'll provide some information regarding how many students exited the program last year through the access data that was provided, as well as a breakdown of languages throughout the district, and how many students we have throughout the district that speak, or have that language spoken in the home.
Right. Okay, so, thank you for that. I also want to just publicly say what we talked about earlier before the meeting is, you know, I don't know how many of us are at this table are, have children enrolled in the new EL curriculum that she's rolling out, but there is a stark difference from my perspective as a parent to see what my kids are bringing home. I have a first grader, a third grader, and a fourth grader, so all three of them are, it, it's a different deal, and I think they're all excited about it, and it's shocking what questions are, you know, I'm getting as a result of them doing that EL homework. So I just wanted to give you that feedback. It's really great.
Yeah, no, thank you. We appreciate that perspective as a parent, seeing the level of rigor increasing at home as well, so.
So I did review the Elevating Educators Grant, and just for those of you in the audience, we were provided with a hundred and five thousand dollar grant from the Illinois State Board of Education specifically to help us retain special education staff. There is, you know, an emerging kind of difficulty in the state of Illinois with districts being able to retain their staff. I met with Ms. Sullivan and Mrs. Blank, thank you so much for being so collaborative. We came to the table, discussed some ideas, and our fearless union leaders actually had a great idea, which is we have seen an increase in, you know, behaviors and students that need assistance due to behaviors. So they brought up the issue that our staff could really benefit from some really good, solid training in how to provide positive behavioral supports to students in the classroom. So we currently contract out for a board-certified behavior analyst three days a week here in district. That individual consults regarding specific students, so if a staff member is struggling with a student in particular, Ms. Park will go to the building and help write a behavioral intervention plan. But this person that we've, that we will be contracting with, Ms. Davis, will be a, more of a coach, a behavioral coach. She'll be working with our special education staff on how their classroom is set up, how they're utilizing prompts, what our paraprofessionals can do to help support positive behaviors in the classroom, very much like our coaching model that we are implementing for other subject areas. So thank you to our MTA co-presidents for bringing that idea to the table. Therapeutic snack, I reviewed our speech-language pathologist, Nicole Steck, who by the way is a Galaxy Award winner, and Trish Roberts, our occupational therapist here at MES, brought to Mrs. Chorley and myself that they hadn't done therapeutic snack in a while, probably due to COVID, and, in part with all of those kind of separation issues. And as anyone that has had young children knows, young children really love to eat and engage with food. This offers an opportunity for students in our early childhood special education classroom to be creative, to interact with food, to communicate with the staff and each other as they're engaging in these activities. Some of our students may have food aversion, so they're required to touch something maybe they weren't comfortable with, or some of our students really like food, and they get to engage in playing with food. But it's been really great, and I was able to provide you with some pictures just of the projects that they've been doing in that environment. I'm very happy with our collaboration with our Easter Seals Coach this year, who is specifically working in our early childhood special education classroom and our special, specialized instruction classroom here at MES. She has been CCing me on her follow-up communications to those teachers, so I'm looking at what she is observing, that our teachers are utilizing that coaching and putting some of those strategies in place, so that's very exciting to see that growth. And of course, per usual, we still need a paraprofessional at MES. If anybody in the community is looking for gainful employment, I encourage you to ask them to apply here. We, we are great employers, we love kids, and we provide on-the-job training. So any questions for me?
Okay. Next up, Dr. Shaw.
Thank you. A couple things. So there is a dragon punch at everybody's seat. So the dragon punch is a option. So the dragon punch is a option that we have in the cafeteria for students. So the dragon punch qualifies as a vegetable. Every day, the students we do offer or serve have to take components to the lunch. One of those components is a vegetable. They have to take three. And the dragon punch qualifies as a vegetable. According to our food service director, eight out of the 10 students will take a dragon punch as their vegetable every day. So there is a dragon punch at your seat for you to sample as your vegetable for today. I also put at your seats a answer to Mrs. Oss' question from the Finance Committee with the Special Ed Report, asking what our actual expenditures per students for the last five years, based on 14%, 15% of our population. And so that slide was updated on the presentation and then also sent at your table, so you can see what that number looks like. And let's see. The next month, we're going to ask for approval for our winter projects for painting. We've got the RFP for the door for next month for an action item, our architect fees for the portion of the playground, the window enhancements, we should be bringing pricing to you for the contract. And then we will hold another hearing on the limitation of administrative costs. Just a little bit of rundown on the limitation of administrative cost. There's a certain section in our audit, which we received tonight. There's a page in there that actually looks at audit actual to budgeted. So when you're crafting a budget, like our auditor said, whether you picked up on it or not, but some things I'm specifically looking for, we received more in revenue than we budgeted for, and we didn't spend as much as we said we were going to spend. And that's what our budget looks like year after year. We're a little more conservative in revenue, a little more liberal in expenses. So when we do have those expenses in these specific functions of the Illinois Public Accounting Manual, the functions are listed. What we actually spend is typically a little less than we actually budget for, because we budget a little more liberally than we spend. So this year, we happen to have, anything that's over 5%, you have to have a waiver, because ISB says you can't spend more than 5% of what you actually spent last year, even though it's a budget. So you have to be very mindful of that. And the biggest portion of that was in the direction of business services and how we itemized the, putting the HR coordinator, we put the HR coordinator in the business office, which increased the expenses in the business office enough to push that number above 5% because we didn't have that position before. We also took a bucket of software that we had $200,000 in, and then we started putting them into the right places. So some of that business software was also budgeted into the same line item, which also pushed that number up. So we have to have a waiver for that, to have those budgeted items. You have to have specifically be in the bottom quartile of like elementary districts compared to unit or high school or elementary district. The bottom quartile of administrative expenses across the entire state of Illinois, which Mokina is in the bottom quartile of administrative expenses of all the elementary districts in the state of Illinois. So we qualify for that. We also held this waiver in 2019, so we've had the process before. So those are really, that's what I have to add to my report. There's a lot of information in the report. And I did leave the front of MIS on my report again this month, because it just looked so good.
Any questions for Dr. Shaw?
I have a quick one, and we can table it to next meeting if need be, because we just received the numbers. And thank you for doing that. I really appreciate it. On the spending, and I'm sorry if I'm not, if there's a glaring answer to it, but the spending per student in 2021, the average area enrollment went down, but our expenses went up, I don't know, $500,000. So could you help me understand that? Thank you.
Yeah. Just knowing what I know about student population in 2021, in 2021, coming back from COVID, we had two students move in who required outplacement to a special ed co-op, of which we are not member districts. We had probably an increase of students that needed the self-program during that time. And then the dip occurred because some of those students may have moved out of district or graduated, matriculated out. So when I, if you'll see, 21, 22, we had a significant change in the budget, the overall budget from 21 to 22, that is due to those tuition costs. But because all of those particular expenses are exemptions for us because they're student-related, we were able to meet maintenance of effort. So if you look, Julie, at the overall budget for those school years, you'll see there's a big difference. And those are just related to tuition costs.
Yep.
Any other questions you have for me that I can have somebody else answer?
Sounds like Kelly's going to try.
Okay.
I need you, though, for this one. So this waiver of limitation of administrative costs, is this a one-time situation that we're doing with the passing of the budget? Or is this like a whole-year waiver that has, that really opens the door to the limitation being outside of these specific accounts that you've identified here?
It's a, it's a one-time, and it happens to coincide with this budget. So it is tied to this budget. And once the budget is passed by the board, the budget doesn't change until we do an amended budget process.
So, but we're passing the budget without the waiver at this point?
The waiver's not required until middle of November.
Okay.
Sometimes you don't have your audit done yet. So your audit's not actually due until October 31st, but your budget is due by September 30th. Those are some of the timing mechanisms in school finance. And this waiver isn't due until November 15th, because your budgets do September 30th, your audits do October 31st. They look at that math, and you have to submit this waiver by November 15th to be in compliance. We're a little early.
So we're early, but we're, the plan is to vote on it in October. So, sorry. This could, even though we've identified these accounts here, that currently the budget is reflective of more than a 5% change in those accounts, would it, would it, would it open the door to, if the, if we went over budget, over 5% on other accounts, would it still come up on our radar? Like, would it still be a conversation with the board? Or does that make sense?
I do. I don't know what you said.
Like, yeah, is the waiver only applicable to these accounts? Or really, can it, are we just waiving the limitation on any administrative costs?
This waiver is only applicable to these specific functions.
Okay.
These specific functions. And some of these functions, we don't even use. We don't use 2330. We don't use 2490. We don't use 2610. We don't use those functions. So they're on there because this is the State Board of Education specific. So those functions are really used by high schools for deans or department heads. So those are also considered administrators. For example, Ms. Toroni is Director of Special Student Services, right? So she's a 1,200. So she's not, she's an administrator, but she's not in these specific functions that ISB is saying we want you to take a look at.
I'm with you. Okay. I got it. I understand. Thank you for that.
And you look at them and you're like, this function is our copy machine. Why is this in here? It's a requirement from ISB.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Moving on to Director of Technology, Mr. Henson.
All right. Good evening. Good evening. I just had three things on my board report for this evening. First one was the Google Transition. They changed their name and licensing structure. I neglected to put on the total cost. Just wanted to give you an update. With last year's pricing, we would have been paying $9,505. This year, we are only paying $7,011. And plus, we get all those extra teacher licenses, so we can add to the Google Suite and emails and such. Network equipment. Last month, we were talking about this, we were missing 38 switches and 16 access points. That has been updated actually this week to missing just five switches. So we have all the access points in and almost all the switches in. Sitting pretty good for there. E-Rate Emergency Connectivity Funds, FCC Form 471. This is exciting. Yes. So just to recap for this, the last one to do apply for this was before I started working here in the district. So I'd like to give a shout out to Jake Smith, the previous tech director, for actually applying for this. Because as of this afternoon, talking to, with our E-Rate guy, Joe, our gentleman from E-Rate First, we did give an email from the ECF, asking where they, where they want them to deposit the money and for the adjustment approval. And so that's like the premost steps. Just to recap, we're getting $94,000 back from the FCC. So, very good news. Not deposited yet, but it's looking highly, highly, highly likely that we should be receiving that money. And that concludes my report. Are there any questions?
Principal reports. Dr. Whitey, you have the honor of going first this month?
The, our state golfer, Grace Chandler. And the amazing thing is, and I put it in my report, I don't know if you read it, she shaved 50 strokes off of her game from last year. 50. And just did amazing at state. She got 12th in state, shot a 86. That's pretty fantastic for a kid who just started golfing last year. So those of us who've been golfing for a very long time, very, very jealous, and she's a great kid, very proud of her. And I want to echo what Craig said about kinder buddies. Our kids were so excited to go over or come over to here to the elementary school. And we want to thank the kindergarten teachers for working with us. I think we've got it down to a science, it's only been, what, seven years? So, but it really is a lot of fun, and the kids really look forward to it. And it's a great, it's a great leadership opportunity for our eighth graders to come work with the younger kids. It's just such a fulfilling thing for them to be the big kid and to be proud of it and know that they're mentoring the future. So other than that, that's really all I have in my, my report for this week, month. Sorry.
I'll just take, really briefly, I wanted to chime in about Grace as well. I got to walk with Grace on our first golf outing, because my son was paired with, with her. Not only does she golf well, but she really is just a kind person that, that helped all the other golfers that were on, in the round with her. And so I just wanted to commend her for that and hope her family is also listening. She is a good person.
Great kid.
Well, hopping on the Grace bandwagon, I would just have to say that my daughter was, you know, her eyes lit up. She got the honor of representing Mokina 159 for the past two years. She's a freshman now at the state golf tournament. She lit up when she got the call from Coach Shaughnessy, asking for advice on the course for Grace and the notes that she had. She's played on that course twice in honor of 159, five other times for other tournaments that she's played in. So the fact that, you know, to have a 14-year-old daughter that lit up when the fact that, you know, a coach in junior high calls, it was pretty cool to, cool to see. So, and just the collaboration. And then her going back to her coach at Lincoln Way, Lincoln Way knows now about Grace. And it's just, it's cool how you can see that camaraderie kind of building already and, you know, looking forward to that next year. So it's pretty cool to see. Any other questions, comments? Then we'll go with Ms. Trulie.
Talk about. But I am excited for the playground. My husband is in construction, and I can't believe that we started on time. I was very doubtful it would happen, because no school construction project starts on time. This one is starting on time, and I, I'm so excited. It is fun to watch that ground dug up, and I can't wait to keep watching the equipment go in. So thank you, Dave. You've been really great with everything. He does a great job communicating and keeping us updated. So thank you. Kinder Buddies, I agree. I love Kinder Buddies. This is the first year I know eighth graders, so that's really exciting for me. They were in third grade my first year here, and so now they're in eighth grade. And it's so fun to see them walk in the door and just be so excited. There was a girl that literally was doing this the whole time. It was so great. So that was a lot of fun. And I want to give a shout out to our, our speech pathologists. Every year, they screen students for articulation errors. And in addition to providing direct service to students who have identified speech and language delays, they also provide intervention to, I think what I said, was approximately 50 students, either in a speedy speech model, which is like, you know, just cleaning up some errors that don't have educational impact, but, you know, we can hear it, maybe socially it'll impact them, or through our TIC Lab, which is an evidence-based intervention where there are certain sounds that do impact their phonemic awareness, so the way that they hear and understand words, and therefore impacts their reading and their writing. So between the two, we have approximately 50 students in that intervention. And that's an intervention in addition to all of the students that they have on their caseload. So just want to give a nice recognition to all of our speech pathologists, because it's a, it's a really important intervention alongside with our Tier 3 reading interventions. It's, it's right there with it. So, yeah, no, thank you. Thank you. And that concludes my report.
Ms. Trulie. Okay. Mr. Mcatee.
Thank you very much. I have just a couple shout-outs that I want to add to my reports. First, I want to thank all of our staff and students. We had our first fire Joe with the police, the police department, the fire department. Fire Marshal Tom was there. From the time the bell sounded to the time our building was completely, one of us is empty, was about 100, or 1 minute 20 seconds, which is just phenomenal, to get, you know, 370-some odd people out of the building. It was, no offense, but he said it's the best one he's seen for a long time. Just saying. Second shout-out, Dr. Ally Martello is our OT in both of our buildings. And she's incredible. She did a PD for my staff, for our staff, on handwriting. You know, handwriting at our age is sometimes challenging to read. So she, at last extended day, she gave, you know, a breakdown of what the teachers could do, you know, some of the causes, some of the, you know, things that could happen. She's been a great resource for our teachers, and she did a just a phenomenal job. My last quick shout-out is to our music directors. You know, we've got our beginner band, cadet band, and orchestra. And between the three of them, we've got about 40% of our total enrollment participating in music. We have 68 in beginner band, 41 in cadet band, and 30 in the orchestra. So phenomenal. I don't know how the, you know, our directors do it with 68 students in one band room. It's challenging, but they just do a phenomenal job. So I just wanted to publicly thank them for all of their work. It was the recorder contribution. That's why we have so many.
That's right. Opened up. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Mcatee?
Just a quick comment. I want to jump on Ms. Ally's bandwagon. She does a fantastic job also at MJH as well. Just really works well with the students and just a shout-out to her.
Ally is a Mokina alum. She went to Mokina, yeah. Yeah. Yep. She was piccolini.
Next up is Ms. Briscoe.
All right. We'll start with finances. In looking at comparisons from last year, the biggest change noted by Mr. Engler is the comparison report. biggest change noted by Mr. Engler, who's the comparison report, is in the capital outlay line item, which is substantially less this, less this July than last July. This is mostly because of the co-op purchased buses last year and did not purchase buses this year. And fuel costs are lower this year, which is a big factor in that. And Mr. Engler said he's assuming this has to do with the timing of the bills. Otherwise, things look pretty in line with expectations. We approved all kinds of things. Some of the bigger things is the budgets, Special Education Support Staff Association contracts, the Parent Student Handbook, Microsoft subscription, the Roberts Environmental Control Corporation to repair the McKay Center heat exchanger at the cost of $11,245. We also approved cutting your Grove mechanicals. We had some boiler issues we had to fix. The gym, the furnace broke there, and the main office air conditioner went out, so that gave us a cost total of $444,000 to be completed by summer of 2024. We approved many intergovernmental agreements. There was eight of them. I won't go through all of them, but they'll be there in the report next month. But Mr. Romeo provided the board with some of his things that he thought, well, there's a list of upcoming events that will be happening here at the health program. And then he just kind of provided us with a little chart of things. Kathy, I meant to get here a little bit early so Kathy could, you know, print this out for the board. So she will do it after the meeting to provide for everybody so they can see. But he just kind of highlights what, you know, the kids come into for the day, their expectations, and they check themselves off, which is really, they get to sit down, read this, and check themselves off, whether they were being good or complied with, you know, the homework, the, you know, what's going on in the classroom. And then they can evaluate themselves, which is really fantastic. And it's just, the list goes on, and the kids, at first some, he said some of them were a little resistant to doing this, but after they start doing it, they, they're like, oh, okay, this is kind of, okay. So Kathy will provide this for the board. We would like to see copy of it. And we did.
Ms. Briscoe?
For what it's worth, I want to make a comment about Mike Romano as well from South. We have our institute day coming up in October, and, you know, we get to have a very unique relationship with the 843 co-op, since we house some of their programs here in our buildings. Mike is actually leading two sessions for our staff on feedback. So we're very, very grateful for their involvement and for his willingness to provide professional learning for our teachers on our institute day.
Okay. For your requests, I believe we had three of them. They were completed. Okay. Moving then on to action requests. And we move to approve all the previous minutes. Okay. What's that? I will move to approve minutes from the August 9, 2023 regular session and closed session minutes, and the September 7 through 2023 special session as presented. Comments? Please call the vote.
Mrs. Briscoe? Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunney?
Yes.
Ms. Zalinski?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, Jim's not here. I was waiting for one more name. All right. Motion passed. District bills. Ms. Zalinski.
Questions were asked and answered, so thank you, Dr. Shaw, for taking time out for me today. I move to approve the monthly bills as presented.
Second. Second by Sam. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunney?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Next up is personnel.
I move to approve personnel. Seven, eight, one, two, ten, as presented. Second.
Second by Ms. Zalinski. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunney?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes. Okay, motion passed. Congratulations to those new hires. Next up is the consent agenda.
I move to approve a consent agenda items 7D, 1 through 5, as presented.
Second. Ms. Briscoe, any discussion? Please call the vote.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunney?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Okay, motion passed. Next up is the adoption of the FY 2023-2024 budget.
I move that the Board of Education approve the 2023-2024 budget as presented.
Second.
Second by Ms. Zalinski. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Mrs. Tunney?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Motion is passed again. Okay, policy revisions. Just the first read, so this is not the final read.
I may as well just keep going. I move to approve the first read policy revisions as presented.
Second by Ms. Briscoe. Any discussion? Okay, please call the vote.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
No, I, no.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passed. Next up is the audit.
I move that the Board of Education accept and approve the results from the FY 23 audit as presented.
Second by Ms. Zalinski. Okay, any discussion on the audit? Okay, please call the vote.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunney?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Okay, next up is the items for the October 18 board meeting. Dr. Shaw, you always have something.
We'll have the, open the meeting with a hearing for the waiver of administrative costs. And then action items will be painting the RFP for the MES front door so we can get that going early on. Our architect fees for the second part of the playground project. We have, we'll have the contract for the window enhancements for approval. You'll, you'll, you'll see the first look at the tentative levy.
You want to go?
I will. Titles or book titles as an action item that I presented as an informational item this month.
Okay.
And if it's appropriate, just consideration given to the policy committee, we can have further discussion. It doesn't need to be decided now, but I would like it to remain in the mix.
Okay.
Can we get the agenda to, to raise votes for the, 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 for the,